I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, October 12th, 2015, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, if you look at the table file, you'll see that we've added the -- actually, it's just an additional part of item number one in the Items for Individual Action, which will include both a -- the resolution that currently is in there, which is to form the new CEVSEC, the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, but also now we'll have a resolution that will leave the Southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative. That way, we just have a very clean break with the fact that we have left that particular joint powers agreement, and we're going to move into a new one. So, that's in there, as well as a number of personnel items. And then in Items for Information, we'll have some additional information for you that Matt will be sharing part of that, in terms of a couple of samples of the work that's being done by Thought Exchange, and well as we'll show you the website, so you can also access that, if you want to take a look at other examples of that particular program. So, you'll see in your materials, you actually have the copy of the resolution and one additional recommendation for employment there.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes for the regular school board meeting held on September 28th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Jeff, second.
Second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, September 28th, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to announcements and recognition. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, the main announcement we have for tonight. Vanna, if you got -- you have copies too. You already handed those out. Excellent. Okay. "Greenbelt Park Community School Inaugural Annual Report," which you have in front of you, highlights many activities participants and community partners were part of the Greenbelt Park Community School last year. The report was distributed to all households within a one-mile radius of Greenbelt Park Elementary, regardless of whether the household had students attending the school. In addition, the report will be distributed to all households who have students who attend Greenbelt Park Elementary and live outside the one-mile radius, all households who have children in the Greenbelt Park Elementary boundary, and their children currently do not attend the Greenbelt Park Elementary, and also all households with children ages three and four who live in the Greenbelt Park Elementary boundary. This report will also be shared with our community partners and funders. Very, very nice report. Nugger and Associates basically did the work in terms of putting the report document together. We want to thank our funders, Greenbelt Park parents, teachers, and administrators. More than 30 community partners who serve on the Greenbelt Park Community School Advisory Council. Funding for the Greenbelt Park Community School, as you remember, is provided by the Minnesota Department of Education, 21st Century Community Learning Centers Cohort Six Grant, also by Women in Northfield Giving Support, Wings, also with their inaugural Dare to Dream Award, also by the Rice County Public Health -- Healthy Rice County Initiative, and the Northfield Area United Way. So, again, I think just a really nice presentation of the information about the work that's happened in that first year, and some very powerful statistics, as you see along the bottom of this, that share all of the information about the number of students, the number of parents impacted, the number of hours of support and out-of-school programming that were provided, just in a very nice document. So, again, a lot of kudos go to Erin on this, as part of the group that really put this together and made it go, and also all of the folks at Greenbelt Park, and the folks that are involved with the Greenbelt Park Community School, in terms of making this really take off this last year. And we look forward to some really great and continuing positive things as we get into the second year of the grant. All right, and that's really the only announcement that I had to make today.
Board members, is there anything anyone would like to add? No? Okay. We, this evening, do not have any item for discussion or reports, so we'll move on to Items for Individual Action, the first being the 2016-17 school year calendar. Dr. Richardson?
Okay. In your materials, you see the copy of the 2016-17 calendar that was shared with you a couple of weeks ago. Remember, this really was -- is the same calendar that was originally developed back in January of this year, and we had just held off until we had an opportunity to see if the legislature was going to do any permanent modifications in terms of potential start times. And although they did a one-year change, which would have allowed us sometime in July to try to tell people in August that we'd start school in August instead of September 8th, we decided that was not necessarily a wise idea. They did not give us any indication that there's any desire to move to a elimination of the after Labor Day start requirements, and so this calendar reflects that particular piece. You will see that the calendar, again, is very similar to what we've seen in previous years. We're looking at the first day of school this year being, for 2016-17, being the 6th of September, the last day of school being the 6th of June. The main other adjustment that's been made is some real clarity about days that are basically teacher preparation days, which means that they are days that there will be no in-service or professional development held, and all the rest of the days, which are staff development days, which we can schedule staff development and any other types of activities that we want to on any of those days. So, this calendar is basically, again, very similar. What I think is important, too, to note is that, as we think about over the last several years, that we have tended to move back and forth between a two-week winter break and a winter break that's seven to eight days. And it really has everything to do with, not only the start of the school year, but also with when holidays fall during the winter break. So, when holidays fall in midweek, then we tend to have a full two weeks of break at winter. If the holidays actually fall on a end of the week, or on the weekend, or at the very beginning of the week, then we can usually operate with a few less than the full 10 days. So, for this year, we're going to be back in that situation. I know Dinita's already plotting out -- you were doing the 17-18, maybe, calendar?
Ready to go.
Ready to go? It seems to me we're -- but it isn't 17-18, it's -- is it 18-19 that we're back out to the 10 days again?
I think so.
So, that's going to just be a cyclical thing, and I think that's important for people to realize, and community members to realize, that the calendar really is very much driven by those holidays, and therefore, when we can provide a shorter winter break and allow us to get more school days before assessments are done, we'll do that, but there will be other years when that can't happen. So, any questions that you might have about the calendar for 2016-17? Otherwise, we would recommend approval of that calendar at this time.
So, board members, it's the Item for Individual Action. So, prior to discussion, the motion is to approve the 2016-17 school year calendar as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Ann, second. Second by Jeff? Okay. Any discussion or questions? Yes, Rob?
This goes way back, I guess, to the discussions we had about the calendar a few years ago, but the fact that Term III is 35 days and Term IV is 50 days, are there implications of the kind of widely differing lengths of the terms?
Actually, the -- what we have heard from staff is that the differential in the number of days in a quarter is not problematic, as long as the total number of days in the semesters are fairly close. So, in this case, we have an 85-day second semester, and we have an 89-day first semester, so again, within four days of one another. So, that tends to work out pretty well. It's just that, in this case, as we take a look at the location for spring break, that tends to make the break between how many days end up in that third quarter, and how many end up in the fourth quarter. But, good question. It's really the semester lengths that are the much more important number.
I think it's important to note, too, that we're approving this, if we proceed with approval, four months prior to when, or earlier than we typically have done. So, hopefully, again, sort of giving our community and families time to plan and do that. So, I think, you know, four months earlier should hopefully help our families.
And we will be getting started here very soon, in terms of taking a look at the calendar for the 17-18 year, and we hope to get that back to you for approval in January. So, we're just trying to roll that process on.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So, we will go on to the second item.
I'm watching my time, Rob.
The second item that we're actually moving in, the second item will be the resolution leaving the Southwest Minnesota Special Education Cooperative Joint Powers Agreement, affectionately known as SEVSEC. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, and actually, again, in this second item, we're going to -- we'd like to address two different pieces, but actually, to get two resolutions from you at this time. So, the first resolution is really the resolution leaving the Southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative Joint Powers Agreement. Again, this is something that Faribault has already done. The other districts have done in advance of that, because when they let us know earlier this year that they were not ready to move forward with the cooperative agreement that we'd originally forged, they've already stepped away. So, all we want to do is just make sure we have a very clean break, so that when we go back to the commissioner to request the approval for CEVSEC, the new Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, that we -- that we're -- it's all clean and taken care of. So, really, the initial recommendation I have for you would be a request that you would have a motion and approval of the resolution leaving the Southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative.
Okay. So, let's move on that issue first. I'll read the resolution.
Do we get a motion?
Don't I read the resolution first and then get the motion?
Okay.
I'm not sure. Anybody?
It's fine. Oftentimes, we don't read the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Unless somebody says, "I need to hear the resolution."
Okay, that's fine. So, we have a motion to approve the resolution leaving the Southeast --
You used Bob's Rules.
Okay, Bob's Rules. Bob's okay with this. So, we're going to approve -- motion to approve the following resolution leaving the South Minus -- Southern -- excuse me. The motion is to approve the resolution leaving the Southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative Joint Powers Agreement. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move it.
Moved by Noel, second. Second by Rob. This is a resolution that calls for roll call vote.
Correct.
So, Dinita, when you're ready.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Okay, the second part, then, is that we are ready to move forward with the new Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative. And again, I shared with you as information last time, the comparison sheet showing the impact of looking at a host district agreement versus a two-district co-op agreement. And basically, at this point, we believe, and in talking with the Minnesota Department of Education, and George Holt, the godfather of special education in the state of Minnesota, he believes that our much better option at this point is the two-district co-op agreement. And you, again, you will see the comparison pieces there. It provides greater flexibility for us to operate. It allows us to request or to have more of the dollars that are expended to be under the co-op, and so the ability, I think, is to support us, both financially and in terms of the facilities development, to look at that two-district co-op piece. So, what you have is actually the new agreement. The new agreement, other than taking out five districts and changing it to two districts and putting in the two districts as opposed to the five, is absolutely identical to what it was before. And the resolution also is simply moving to the new Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, with a desire to have you, again, make a motion to the resolution, which enters into the new joint powers agreement between Northfield and Faribault. At this point, my understanding is that Faribault will be doing the exact same thing at their board meeting, which is the second board meeting in October for them. They have a -- actually, have a work session the first board meeting, and so the second board meeting, which is the 20 --
Next week. Yeah? 19. 19. Monday.
No, two weeks.
Twenty-sixth.
I think it's the 26th, I believe, is when they will do theirs. And I think you'll notice that this thing is actually dated that way to address the 26th. So, at this point, I sure would be happy to answer any questions. Again, the frame for this is -- puts us in a position where both districts are involved with providing some of the direct programming, having facilities located within each of our districts, but really working to have all of the programs that are called setting for, Level Four, programs being operated or facilitated underneath the co-op agreement. And while we will not save as many dollars as we would have likely saved if we'd had all five districts involved, we still put ourselves in a better position going forward. And if, at some point, some other district decides that they would like to be part of this co-op, we have then the ability to add additional districts to the co-op at any time by agreement by the current member district. So, we have that potential, actually, to grow this as we go forward. And it also then puts us in a position where, when these things are done, then we're ready to move forward with completing the lease agreement on the facility that we're currently looking at, and also to prepare for the build-out for that particular facility, again, to get us on track and on time to be ready to open that in the fall of 2016-17. So, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board members, any questions? Okay. So, the -- oh, I'm sorry, Rob.
Go ahead.
I do have a question.
Good.
Under Article --
Because I actually have three people here that can answer tonight.
Article seven dissolution.
Yes.
Does this agreement will continue in effect until two-thirds of the member districts vote to terminate this agreement, et cetera?
Yes.
If that was the same language as was in the previous agreement, then the agreement was already dissolved before we voted to rescind our participation.
Yes. All this is, is -- this is insurance. I just want to make absolutely sure that when this goes to the department, I'm not having the department pulling the old CEVSEC agreement out of the file, which is where they promised me they would put it, and saying, "Oh, I think, don't you still have an agreement in place?" But you are correct. We have other districts that have already made the decision that they are not willing to move forward with this process. So, yeah, that's -- this is, in my mind, was just making absolutely sure that we had no ability of the department to come back and say, "Well, you're not in a position to start the new co-op."
And then, the other question would be, now there's -- there are two districts involved, so what are the sort of safeguards that Faribault doesn't say, "We want to get out of this," and they vote and they're half, rather than two-thirds?
Well, the key piece is, once this thing actually cranks up, then there's a full year that they would have to give us before they could request to go out of the co-op. I think the other thing is, at least from the discussions we've had with the superintendent and members of the staff in Faribault, we have a over-a-decade-long relationship with them in terms of the original joint powers agreement that we've been in, and they know how we operate, we know how they operate. I think there's a great desire to be able to maintain that long-term. We really were concerned about the fact that, when we originally elected CEVSEC, we simply really wanted to take that agreement and expand it to create the larger five-district co-op. So, can I say to you, with 99 and 94, 100% deadly accuracy, that this will never happen? Yeah, I think I can, but the reality is, you're absolutely right. They could, they could, with a year's request, they could get out.
The way it's written, two-thirds of the member districts. I mean, there's only two districts, so you can't have two-thirds.
I know. And we've shared all of that information with George, and I said, "That's the way the thing is written." Obviously, the -- it's structured that way, with the idea that if we get future additional districts to join on, then we won't have to try to rewrite the agreement when we're there. The reality is, right now, the only way we can get out, once we sign up on this one, is both districts have to leave, because you can't get the requisite two-thirds without 100% of the voting members voting to dissolve. So, it's -- the language there is really to put us in place to address the future, when there might be additional districts that choose to come in. And we already know that we have some interest from a third district, who already is going to be sending some students to the Faribault program next year, and so the possibilities, I think, are still out there. But we're not -- we can't wait while they decide what they're going to do. Okay? But, no, your read is exactly, is exactly accurate. It's the way it's created right now, once this is implemented, unless both of us say we're done, it's going to continue. And I think that's not a bad thing. Okay?
Thank you. Any other questions? The superintendent's recommendation is to approve the proposed resolution and agreement creating the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Noel, second. Second by Rob. This is a resolution which also requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. So, board members, we'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff, second. Second by Ann. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to Items for Information. The first item being the Thoughtful Exchange. Dr. Richardson?
Actually, the first item is the enrollment.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to do enrollment. Okay.
So, very quickly, on the enrollment report, again, this is our October 1 enrollment report, which is usually the first one where we have fairly firm numbers to work with. It's always a little squishy, and you can see, over the first few weeks, that we have moved about nine or 10 students, one way or the other, over the course of the last several weeks. But as of October 1, which usually is a fairly solid number, we're 3,994 students, which is actually about 50 students larger than I can remember us being in the last decade. At various times in the last decade, this would be a number that's actually 100 kids larger than what we've had in certain years over the last decade. So, that's -- and this is in no way to suggest that Hazel's numbers aren't right, but the good thing is, kids here on our bottom line are a good thing to have. And so, our numbers really are holding very solid, at almost 4,000 kids.
Why do we stay so consistent? I mean, backwards and forward? I mean, with the numbers over the years.
Over the last decade? That's, I mean, that's been an interesting discussion. I think that there was some real belief, back before the Great Recession of 2008, that we were going to continue to grow and get bigger. For all intents and purposes, almost every district in the state stopped growing in 2008. And so, we, as far as move-ins. Also, our birth rate is low. And you combine low birth rate with people not really wanting to move, or not being able to move, because they can't sell homes, or the homes are underwater, in terms of the pricing or whatever, people just don't move. And right now, as we've looked at the new houses, and again, as Hazel reminded you, you know, that the largest growing segment of the population in Northfield is 55-plus. And so, at 55-plus, those folks are not producing young children coming to school. And so, really, the reality is, what's -- how we're kind of holding our own right now is that we are still getting some move-ins, and we're getting a fairly significant bump in terms of the non-resident agreement and open enrollments coming in from other school districts. But right at this point, I'd love to be able to say, gee, we're going to grow several hundred kids. I just, we're not seeing that, and again, Hazel's data would tell us in 10 years, we'll actually be about 200 kids less. Now, all that can, could change if there was a huge new spike in housing, a huge new increase in the number of babies born. But right now, those numbers are staying pretty stagnant. The good thing, however, for us is that, right now, with all the everyday kindergarten, all of our buildings are full, and so that's a solid place to be. Our middle school and high school are in solid shape. We only saw about a 17-student drop in terms of the middle school numbers, and we saw, obviously, over a 30-student increase in high school. And so, again, high school, if you're looking at it, is at almost 1,300 kids right now. So, it's a good place to be, in terms of not seeing any significant drops, but we aren't seeing huge growth either. The other thing I think is important for us to look at in this is the enrollment report on the other side, which takes a look at enrollment in terms of classes. And I do know that we have some folks in the community who are saying they're concerned about some of the upper elementary class sizes. The reality, however, is, as you look at the buildings, which typically have 23 to 24 sections of students in them, or classrooms in them, basically, each building has just three of those sections that are over 27 kids. So, you have basically three at Sibley, three at Bridgewater, three at Greenbelt Park. The flip side is, you have a lot of kindergarten classrooms that are, and first-grade classrooms that are in the 20, 21. So, the numbers in terms of the primary grades are really solid and good for providing high-quality, early childhood education. So, you know, I know that we have people who would say, "Well, you know, I wish we had never had a class of 27, or 28, or 29." But the reality is, you know, we have not added back, you know, staffing since we made those cuts 10 years ago. But our numbers have played out better, and the other thing that has really helped those to play out more smoothly has been the modifications that we did with the Compañeras Program, which really moved to a single section of each grade level, 1 through 5, in each building. With those numbers in place, that's helped us to not end up with significantly larger non-compañeras classrooms than compañeras classrooms across the board. So, I sure would be willing to answer any questions. I wish, Jeff, I could tell you the absolute reason why that's there, but that's the best stab I can give you at this point. So, any questions about the enrollment report?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, we will now move on to the second item, which is the Thought Exchange, and just as a reminder, board And just as a reminder, board members, there was some information in our packets.
Yes. You had a couple pages, and then you actually had some Q and A information about Thought Exchange. This is something that Matt and I have been looking at for the past couple of months. It really was originally suggested to us by Ayers and Associates, who do a lot of the work that we do for finance and bond issue and referendum work. And they suggested that we take a look at them because of the strategies that they were using to help us to identify how our community is really feeling about various issues. As you know, we've just completed seven sessions, going out in the community and asking for an opportunity to talk to them about the possibilities for various district facilities proposals. Over those seven sessions, we've had a total of 29 people who aren't school people. And we even had Noel, who came to more than one session, but he wasn't counted in the 29. So our, our greatest concern is that, that despite every effort that we're trying to make to invite people in, to talk about these issues, to try to think about what's going on, we're getting a very limited response. And what we're hearing is from talking to other school districts, even school districts that are in the middle of bond issue campaigns right now, like Owatonna. They're getting nine people showing up at a, at a public hearing or a public meeting. At a time when you would expect those voters to really be thinking, because they're not just talking about, talking about the possibility of doing something with the facilities, they actually have a bond issue in the works that will come to a vote in November. So as we looked at Thought Exchange, there are several things within it that we really liked the idea of. First, that it, it really provides an opportunity to draw on a much larger population of participants. That it allows them to share their ideas and to really, initially with the first process, to really share thoughts on a variety of different issues, to be very candid about what they're thinking. The data is anonymous. And, but then, that as part of the, of the process, they have a second step where they actually have the opportunity to do the equivalent of electronic power voting. So all the data is collected and shared, and then individuals are able to come back and actually star, with a star process, be able to identify the things that are most important to them.
Sorry.
Sorry. And, and to basically, to share that out. And then the third step is what they call Discover, which is the opportunity then to actually take and look at the data compiled and shown to us by, how are people feeling? You know, what are the things that are really the most important to them? What are the issues that are rising to the top? What are the things that maybe are not as important as we thought they might have been? And so when we talked to the folks at Thought Exchange, they said, we really believe in this process. We've got a number of districts, mainly in the Northwest, that are using the process. They're getting about 25% of their total participation are actually showing up on the website and going through the process, because there's no passwords, there's, there's no, it's really easy to get in and to use it, but it is, once you come in as a user, you have a very independent or individual outlet into the process so that you're sharing the data. They also suggested to us that you can use this process to do two things. The first piece is really to do what they call a weather report. And in the weather report, it's really trying to say, let's give you the opportunity, just tell us how you feel about the school district. And it could be, you know, in any area. They could talk about enrollment, they could talk about classroom offerings, they could talk about class size, they could talk about buildings, they could talk about whatever. And, and that data gets captured, and then it gets displayed and shown in a way that then they can come back and power vote, looking at everybody else's responses, always anonymous, but having the ability then to power vote, and then to come back and take a look at how, how is the entire community feeling? And the other process then that they use typically is one where, once they do an initial weather report, so that people trust the system, that they get a chance to see that it really does provide the kind of data that really tells folks what's happening and what the concerns are, and what the important elements are, then you could do one that is issue-focused. So our hope would be that what we could do this fall is to do the weather report strategy, which we gather the general data. And then next spring, large, we do a second one that would be issue-focused, and very likely focused on the facilities process, so that we'd be able to get some real sense of how are people really feeling about the facilities proposals that we're talking about? When we talked to these folks, they were able to give us specific examples of how people had used it to do both kinds of things. They'd used it to do the, the general gathering information about how is the community feeling about your school district, but they also did it to look at bond issues. Actually, had another one that used it to take a look at doing a year-round school strategy, or a battles calendar strategy. The interesting thing with that one is, when they got done and they gathered the data and shared it back, is that the community was split right down the middle, 50/50. So the response back from Thought Exchange is, look at your data, your data says your community isn't really ready to move forward with this. So it's not about trying to force a particular solution or force a particular idea, it's really about helping people to really share what they know. The data that we're seeing from the, the presentations is, again, that they get about 25% of their population to respond. So they have, one district that they showed us that has about 7,000 students, they got about 2,000 respondents, which, you know, for us, at 4,000, if we could get 1,000 respondents to give us data, how much more robust that information would be, that would help us to know what's going on. So our plan at this point is, you know, we're planning to, to move forward with this, and look at doing this over a several-year process, with the idea that each year we would do a weather report in, in the first session, or the first fall activity, where we really would get a sense of how people are feeling about the school district. And then the second one would really be tied to an issue. So while this spring may be an issue, may be about facilities, next year it could be about a totally different issue. But it would be the idea that we'd have the opportunity to really gather much better and more substantial feedback. Because I think the greatest concern that Matt and I have had is, we've worked through this, and really looking at several of the things that we've worked on over the last couple of years, we tend to get very small turnout of folks. And we may get somebody that posts stuff on the, on their blog, we may get somebody that says something at the coffee shop, we may get somebody that comments on the newspaper chat area, but you really don't get a sense of what most of the people are thinking about. And we're not going to get that if we are getting just these very random, very individualized pieces. This thing really has, I think, the power to take us where we want to go. So what we'd like to do tonight is to share with you a couple of short videos that are presented from a couple of different districts where they have implemented this process. And then also to share with you the fact that you can go to ThoughtExchange.com, and you can pull up all of these videos, plus a whole group of other videos, where it's basically people in the community, the administrators in the community, and board members in the community, talking to you about how it works. So let's, Matt?
The first, the first view is actually a, it'll be just a reinforcement, what Dr. Richardson said, from the Thought Exchange company. So these have a little bit of a salesy feel to them, so I want to be upfront about that. But this one is just gonna reinforce that what Chris has just said, it's the, what they call community engagement in one minute.
Many people feel they don't have a voice. We thought about our community, and we always be heard, but if everyone's talking, it's hard to hear anything. That's where Thought Exchange comes in. Through Thought Exchange, you can express what's important to you, things you care about, things that matter, and you can express your opinion whenever you want, day or night, over coffee or in your pajamas. Then you can share your thoughts with everyone else in the community, and you get to see what's important to them, many things you haven't even thought of. You can ponder those, then add stars to what you feel most strongly about. That way, the things that are most important to people rise to the surface. The results face on what the community cares about, including you. And when there's a tough decision to be made, it's balanced and informed and made for the right reasons. Thought Exchange.
So they've just done another, a good little prime and pump, you know, piece there. And this, this video, this part here includes folks from our district who actually used the software, and you'll get a chance to see what they did here.
I was educating parts in New York City, the public schools. We moved from New York to Long Island, and the public schools in Long Island, they're called Brooklyn. Very far, probably, there.
It's very important to us, before we set concrete goals and strategic directions for the school district, to make sure what we're creating reflects the local values and the local priorities for our children. So we've reached out to our community in various ways. The in-person engagement was wonderful, but there's only so much human capacity to ask open-ended questions and to meet groups. The survey process was interesting, but it's so un-dimensional. You know, we leave these set of questions, and we can kind of predict the responses, and it's much less open than the Thought Exchange process.
What has been different about using Thought Exchange is that this is a true engagement. It is a conversation beyond just checking boxes. When we ask questions of our community, they respond, and the ideas are shared out again, and our community gets to see other ideas. They get to then prioritize those ideas. So the information that we receive is not only very rich and very thorough, but it also shows us where the most important priorities are in our community. That's the difference. So power is building on the thoughts of others, and finding that common ground, that then we know we have reliable community.
Thought Exchange is really helping us take the guesswork out of predicting what our community wants and what our community needs. It's really a direct way of asking our community and having them interact around ideas. We're very excited about the number of participants we've had in our recent engagement. We've had over 2,000 unique participants, which is just incredible, with over 5,500 thoughts, and 71,000 stars were assigned in this process. At the end of the day, this is all really about building a relationship, building trust, and it's really exciting to be part of a movement that goes beyond survey questions and comment boxes, to building a long-lasting, robust relationship for our community.
I just want to show you the Thought Exchange website, so that you have a chance to see. And then just, you just Google Thought Exchange. And basically, if you look at this case, they have this publications area. Or like that YouTube just plays the next channel here, or the next video.
It just goes right on.
So when you go into the publications area, there's a whole bunch of areas in terms of various things, in terms of they got their own blogs, some case studies, which, I tell you, there are case studies and papers on a company's website, I look at them with a grain of salt, but you'll see the videos, and the videos are pretty powerful, in terms of all the different thought processes and all the different options that you can see from different school districts. So if you're interested in seeing more about it, I think that's a good piece. Now, I had an epiphany over the weekend, as I was thinking about this, that really the process that Thought Exchange uses is a, a very old research process called a Delphi study. And that happens to be an area that I'm very interested in and actually used in my dissertation. And really, the concept behind a Delphi study is that, exactly what Thought Exchange says, they, they try to give all people an option, an opportunity to be part of the conversation. We know that, being a lifelong extrovert myself, sometimes people like me might dominate a public meeting, or we might really overtake a particular piece here. And what's nice about the Delphi component is that everyone has a chance to say what they're saying honestly, without, you know, having any preconceived notions attached to it. And then people essentially have the chance to say, oh, I really like that thought, or maybe that's not as important to me. I think the most compelling story that Chris and I have heard during our research was around a, a larger city in Washington that has several high schools, but they share one athletic complex stadium. And the stadium was a couple of decades old, and as they were talking about a facility structure, they were, our facilities plan, they really were saying, a small group of people were saying, we really need to do a lot of work to the stadium, the stadium needs some significant upgrades and those kinds of pieces. And as they went through the Thought Exchange process, people said, yes, we need to do some stadium upgrade pieces, but they're not as important as these other things. And I think what we had heard from that testimony was that they were going down the road based upon what they had been hearing from some, but when they went out to the larger community, they found that while it was a thing that people mentioned, when compared to the other priorities, it wasn't as important in that particular district. And so what I like about this concept is you bubble what the truth is, or what people really think, to the top, without having, you know, people's opinions taken over, and you really get to see what a true, a true sense of what the people who participated in the survey feel. Couple other things that I really like about, it's one of the hard pieces with doing a Delphi, or any kind of open-ended study like this, is there are times that people are mean-spirited in their responses, or they are totally off-task and don't answer the question. Part of the Thought Exchange process is they go through, and they have a, a process that they go through to look at the responses, and say, did it actually answer the question? Because if it didn't answer the question, they obviously don't want to give that back to people for the second round. And if there are things that are mean-spirited, or, you know, just really not appropriate for that kind of thing, they will remove that for us, so it's not the district doing it, it's the research partner doing it. So we, I really think, I'm, you can tell I'm a little jazzed about it, because I think what's really cool about it is the fact that I do think we have a chance to reach more people. And what Thought Exchange will tell you very clearly is, this is not a replacement for face-to-face, it's actually an important spur for face-to-face. In fact, they suggest you do the survey first, and then have the face-to-face meetings, because they believe that it will generate interest, and that it will help you frame the face-to-face questions in a little bit more of a data-informed way. So that's my take on it, and I, I think it, I think it really, we have been serious about engaging the community. I mean, in the past few years, you think about the issues that we've worked through, and how many evening meetings, how many hours we've worked with the community to try to engage them, with relatively, overall relatively limited participation. I think it's not that people don't care, I think it's that people are very busy, and we are, we have a lot of competition, every single night, you know, for people to come. So the one thing that we still need some help thinking about is, I think we have a very effective tool to engage our school community, in terms of using Skylar, and of course, our staff. One of the pieces to, to engage the larger community, we may need to look at things like trying to get into the city's water bill. You know, I mean, if you're ahead of the game enough, you could put something in the water bill for people to see and invite them to participate in the study, and it might even be a case where we have to do a dreaded mailing.
They'll do an insert in the, in the water bill, so that people can say, okay, if, if I want to participate, I can just type in this, and it'll take me right to the, to the site, so I can participate. Yeah, the, I mean, the water bill is really the one.
How many people like you don't look at their water bill?
Well, except that, hopefully, most of them pay it eventually, so.
Well, I pay mine digitally, so I don't obviously.
Yes, you don't even see the water bill. There you go.
But it's another avenue, and as you know, we have reached out, you know, you think about all of the ways that we've tried to communicate, you know, we've had Northfield News, who's done some very nice pieces for us on the facilities plan, and our TransTech, and the calendar for that, and all those kinds of things. We use KYMM Radio, is generous with us, we threw Dr. Richardson's radio show twice a month, and the kind of information that they put on it. But we still aren't, we still haven't been successful yet in, you know, garnering a lot of people's attention. And this, we think, is the next, one of the next logical ways to do it.
So again, tonight, we just wanted to share with you that this is the, this is the path we're headed down. And our hope is to really work with this over a three-year period. And our hope is to really work with this over a three-year period with Thought Exchange and to actually provide in this first year again, two different studies. Uh, one in the fall that will be, and fall is coming quickly as some of you have been outside today. I haven't been outside since this morning. But, um, basically, one that, that actually does more, a general sense of how are people feeling about the school district? And then to provide a weather report back that basically says, from the community's perspective, here's what we like about what's going on, here are things where we have questions or we have concerns or whatever. We get that piece done first and then looking at this spring to do a second one where we would really focus in on the district facilities process and really begin to do that. We also see this then as a, a piece that we can do over a multi-year period to actually address at least two more big issue areas over the next, uh, three years and also to continue to, uh, do the dipstick to see how is the, how is the community feeling about us in general. So we just wanted you to, to understand what was, uh, being, uh, done and to give you a chance to ask any questions you might have.
Board members' questions? No.
Is there a, a, a system in place that restricts the comments to those who are taxpayers of the district?
I don't believe that they're able to do it based on geography or it's not, in order to, when, if you're going to do that, then there has to be some kind of other protection in place. And when you put protection in place now, it doesn't become as simple, uh, to do. So the fact is, I'm not sure that I can say that they, they do. We will ask them that. Knowing how other surveys work, the more that you do this kind of piece, they may have a component that only one computer can take it at a time, but I have not seen something yet that does not, I've not seen something that's able to do it based upon geography.
But, but what there will be in it, there, there are some initial questions that get some demographics of the individuals...
Correct.
...providing. So that, we're going to be able to get a sense of, is this an, an elementary parent or a middle school parent, high school parent responding?
Community member.
Uh, a community member responding. We, we're going to be able to get some sense of, um, enough of those things that will, will not only be able to, to take a look at it district-wide, but we'll be able to see, is it different in certain parts of the community based on the demographics probably of the elementary?
And if we're that successful that we have all people and other people who want to take our survey, well, that, you know, I, I do think that if we are to get a significant number of people, if we're to have a few people who are to jump in, my hope would be that that would be drowned out by the sheer number of people from the district that take it.
Other questions?
Jeff asked a question. I'll, I'll wait.
Okay.
Is there, what, how do they get paid? Is it this computer program or is this a fee that the...
The school district will pay a fee.
It's, it's a fee each year. And the, the, again, the, the thing that we appreciate with this is that if you think about typically, if you do a traditional survey, um, when we've done surveys for you over the, over the past years, we've tried to collect the data. We've tried to, as much as possible, summarize that data or put it into clusters and so on. What this, uh, system does is they do the, they do the data collection and they do the data analysis and they do the data clustering. So it's not going to be, well, you know, we don't trust this survey because the school district is, is only picking out the things that they want us to be able to rank or star or power vote on, um, which we think is really important. The other piece is, and I think is also a good piece, is, and they're very upfront about it in terms of saying, you know, if, if someone is rude or is, you know, is attacking or is way off, is way off-base, that it's not really answering the, the questions that are being asked, those are screened out of the, of the process. So you don't end up with this, you know, it may be this very strident comment that has nothing to do with what the question was and that ends up drowning out all the other data that's being collected. So yeah, it's, it's a fee-based process, uh, that we do and, and, you know, if you think about it in the past, we've done some similar things when we hired Griff Wigley's company to do the work with us when we were doing the calendar. We basically hired him to come in and help support us with, um, data and doing some Google Hangouts and doing some other kinds of pieces. The difference we see here is being able to significantly expand the feedback that we get from a much broader, uh, perspective of our community and, and to us, especially as we get into some heavy-duty discussions around facilities where we are likely talking about millions of dollars of potential facilities, remodeling, construction, whatever, um, we really feel we need more than the voices of 29 people.
Other questions? No.
I, I don't want to be labeled as, as a skeptic and I'm certainly not, but, uh, I have cause to ask the question. Can you weigh in more than once?
My, my sense would be the fact that a lot of these systems, and we'll find that, I can find that out, piece out, they will allow your individual computer to take it once. So there's, um, now are there ways around that? Sure and all.
Yeah.
But if you think about it, many other survey programs, let's just say for example, something like Survey Monkey, you have the choice when you set it up, you know, do we allow one, um, one response? And they, they will use some specific things in a computer like, um, an internet address or they may use something like a, a cookie that is downloaded into your web browser or onto your computer. So there are, there are other systems that say you can only take it once per device or per, in some cases that'd be per household depending upon what method that they're using. So while we have not had that particular question specifically answered, because this is a little bit of an investment, I mean, and just rather than just clicking boxes or saying one, two, three or four, I'm having to actually provide some feedback. And so there'd be some effort, uh, to do it more than once, but there are ways to do that and my, my sense is that they use all, if, this is pretty sophisticated. So my sense is that they use those kinds of, um, technologies to allow people to participate once. And I think you could probably choose, do you want to let people participate more than once?
What I've seen though, and I've actually done a couple of these now because there, there's actually a national one that's being done right now with, um, where Thought Exchange is, uh, working with another, um, professional organization to try to do some pieces around communication. So I had a chance to do it myself. It, it, it knows that if you go on and you can't finish, you can stop. It will remember where you are, it will let you come back in again. You have to actually finish up and, and click off to basically say, I'm done, I've shared all the information I have. The other thing I find really powerful with it is it has some of the mentality of Twitter and yet gives you the ability to do the, the longer answers. So in each time when you're answering, it, it'll have a question and then it'll say, what's your first response to this? You have 75 characters to kind of say, this is my idea. So it's, uh, reduce class size, that's my idea. I can do that in my 75 characters. Then it gives you a box, it's got a space for 300 characters. And then you describe what it is that you're thinking about for that particular piece. Now, the thing that I saw that was really powerful is when you get done and you're going back in now to, because I did, actually did today, the STAR process, I came back in and there were, you know, several hundred people that had participated. I found my idea, I, I, that I had written out and it gave me the chance to basically start if I thought it was an important idea or not. So I think what people are going to see is that, because they don't, they do not re, you know, in, unless you have something that is just this very aggressive attacking kind of, or rude or whatever, they're not going to rewrite your stuff. But what they are going to do is, is condense those pieces that they say, these things kind of fit in this package. And so then when you're doing the STAR process, you might have eight or nine ideas out on the page and, and, you know, and 20 stars to work with. And then you're basically ranking order of those things that have similar thoughts, but you're saying, I, I like this one, I like this one, I think this one deserves more, I put more stars on the things that are more important. So by the time you get to the third step, you're actually getting a report back that says, if we look at all the things that people responded to, here were the things that rose to the top and here's how passionate people are about those ideas. Um, it's, it's a pretty unique, you know, and I mean, it's not like it's, it's a new thing. You guys have all done power voting before. You know how that works in, in a small group. The problem is that you just don't get that kind of response numbers. And, and so we see the power of this in the fact that it's doing things that we know from research and research base are good ways to ask questions and to get feedback, but they're doing it in a way that eliminates the idea that somebody's got to pack up the kids and come to a meeting or figure out something to do with the kids so they can come to a meeting or that they, they can stay till the meeting's over so they can actually get a chance to respond. And all those pieces can be done if it's over coffee at night, whatever.
There's also, you know, it's also got immediate inline translation, um, you know, I mean, so there's some pieces around that. I mean, there, they, there's the ability to, um, have the entire initial piece translated, you know, ahead of time and then even the thoughts can be instantly translated, you know, using a Google Translate piece. So, um, the good part is there's also an effort to make sure that we are able to try to meet all the criteria of the people who are using the system.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to clarify something. Some years ago, there was an issue and I believe it was on special education and, uh, I had a little bit of black time one night and I was looking at the responses and I Googled up the response only to find out it was in California. And one was California, one was Montana and they weighed in three times.
Yeah. And that, that was not long ago either because I know exactly what the issue was. But the, the difference here is you don't get in, you don't have the ability to, to get into the survey unless someone sends you an initial letter that says, here's your, here's your key in. And, and what they recommended initially for the internal, um, community, the, the parent community, is that the, the letter inviting people to, to do the work is sent out by the building principal and the code is right in the letter. And then in order to get in, you have to have gotten the letter from the, the principal and then, then you then can come in and respond. But my sense is, once you begin to respond, you're, you are isolated so that you're the one that, that needs to continue to respond to that and you continue to respond till you get done and till you click the final button that says, I've shared all the information I want to share.
Sounds like a good idea.
It's, it, I think is a...
Pretty awesome.
...a really positive piece. And again, uh, I think Matt and I, when we went into this, as you can imagine, we always have a slight bit of trepidation. We always have, eh, you know, a, a little bit of, of what are they trying to sell us now? And we came away from this, I think, both of us going, this thing really has some potential. And so, you know, we really want to move forward with it because we think it has the potential right now to give us some good feedback in terms of things that are going on this fall and then next spring to actually zero in on the core issues around the district facilities plan, which at that point, I think we will have, uh, in a place where we can actually ask some questions and get some good feedback.
Other questions, Rob?
I'm just interested, you said that there was one school district that had a question about the school calendar...
Right.
...all-year schooling and they concluded that it was 50/50 and their conclusion was not to go ahead, the community wasn't ready.
Well, and, and that actually was the conclusion of the school district.
Okay, yeah. I was wondering about who analyzes the data.
Yeah, so, so what the data came back with was, you know, here's a group of people over here, they have these strong ideas and strong thoughts and are very passionate and it's about keeping the calendar just the way it is. And you have this other group that's equally as strong, equally as passionate and equally, you know, the same number of folks that are saying, this is the worst idea you ever had, don't even think about doing it. It was then, it then gave the, the, the school district the ability to say, it's very clear to us, we don't have any kind of consensus here about moving this forward. And then they made the choice not to, not to go. One of the pieces here, if you get a chance to, to go in and look at this, I believe the district is, Sappas, Sappas, Salamos? Any, anyway, they, they were, they actually go through and there's a, a video and a case study about that particular district and, and, and what it tried to do in terms of looking at that particular piece. I think it's in the case study ones, I think, which you got to get the case studies, but...
So the company gathers the information that they don't make...
Yeah, so the company gathers the data, tells you how passionate people are about it, gets people to power vote, but they are not going to tell you, this is what you, you know, they're not going to say, we've analyzed your data and we've determined this is the answer. But what they are going to do is say, here's, here's this writ set of data that tells you, how are people really feeling in their own words? Because what you get back in terms of data is you get actually all the people's individual comments that they made and you get the rank ordering of everybody who elected all the different comments in terms of ranking those, in terms of which ones people thought were the most powerful.
They give you two really distinct different pieces. They give you the total number of stars. So that would be the, the total number, you know, the total number of stars that were given. Then they also give you a, a passion rate, which is the average number of stars. So the next part is this, what Chris is describing, they call cohort visualization, where they actually have graphing based upon the various thoughts to show you how many people, you know, provided at least one star to that, but how many of them were more than one star to, with the more stars that they gave on one thought mean they felt more passionately about that. So it, I think it does give, allow you to, the, allows us as a district to discern, not only do people, have they considered this or thought about, but how passionate are they about it? And I think that is what helps really make the decision that where, we've often had a lot of data, but I'm not sure if we've always had a lot of information. And I think that that's a difference with the strategy.
Well, and, and again, all of the ones that we looked at in the discussion that we had with them, you know, they, they're basically saying, you know, we're getting a thousand or more participants. You typically get, you know, twice as many thoughts. So you're getting two to 3,000 different thoughts that are being expressed. And then people then are, are putting out stars in terms of saying, which ones are the, the most important to them individually. So you get all the individual data, but then you get all this data also analyzed in terms of saying, kind of, how passionate are they about each of those elements? But you can always go, you can actually go back and in the, the data, you can actually go back and, and zero in on the individual comment and see how people are feeling. Again, never divulging the individual's name, but you, but you get the, you get exactly what they said. So it isn't like, you know, you have some people who would say to you, well, you know, you, you've rewritten that comment to say it the way you wanted to say it. All the comments are the original comments that people have made, it's just that as, as individuals who have taken the, and gone through the process, when they get done, they've identified these particular comments as being the ones that are the most powerful for them and the ones that they really want to make sure that the district hears.
Is there some kind of guarantee on it? What if we only, what if we break the pattern and only 75 people participate? Do you get your money back?
I, well, we're obviously going to, going to start with the first year of the process. If that's what it looks like with going into the first one, I'm guessing they don't want to have, because we would be only maybe the second district in Minnesota that's trying this process with them. My sense is they will, they would work with us to figure out what's going wrong. Because it, you know, district after district is coming up with, again, you know, they're saying about 25% of the, of the possible participants are participating, which gives you a, a huge, you know, Brittany knows from, from getting the data back from the newspaper, you tend to have 10 or 15 people that may come back and share ideas with you. And it oftentimes is the same 10 or 12 people. This, this really significantly increases the number and the power of the fact that, that if I share an idea and somebody else looks at that idea and says, yeah, that's really what, you know, what I want to make sure gets reinforced, they have the ability to star that data and get it forward. Obviously, as we go into this, you know, we will, because we are wanting to look at it multiple year... it multiple year, you know, there's a, there's a great expectation on our part, they're going to prove, they're going to prove concept as we go forward. And I think they could say, we can prove concept based on the number of school districts that they've done it with and the number of responses they've gotten each time. Anyway, we just wanted to share this with you tonight because our sense is we want to move forward with this and we just wanted you to know so that when, when you begin to see this data popping up before the end of this calendar year, that you'll know where it's coming from and why we're doing this and how important we think this is to really increase the flow of information, communication between our community and the school district.
Is there any other questions? I had just two quick questions. So Matt, are we going to be pushing out, say, a Spanish version or if a community member or family wanted it in Spanish, they would have to do the, the translation?
They will do the translation upfront and so you'll be able to have a choice, you'll be able to get the, and most likely what I would guess that we would most likely use is when we use Skylar, we have a choice for each message, we can actually program both the English and the Spanish version and then based upon how you've registered in our system, you get, you get the appropriate one for your, so yes, they would get that initial one upfront in that way, yeah.
And then I'm assuming staff is involved with the-
Staff will be part of it as well.
And then my second question is, so it's a two-step process. So what is typically the turnaround when somebody's completed a survey to when they come back and are, are asked to, or see the-
One week.
One week?
One week. So again, just because I've just gone through the one, last week I did the first step, I put all my ideas down. This week, they came back and said, here's the ideas from all the different people that have responded and, and then here's, here's your stars that you can put on those things that you think are most important. So I did that today and then they're basically saying, in about another week, they will come back with the, with the discovery portion where they actually will share the overall results. So yeah, it's, it's a quick turnaround.
So if you were, so the building principal sends it out to you, you don't do step one, does that mean you don't get step two or you would automatically get step two?
My understanding is that people can actually come back and participate in step two-
Two without ever having done step one.
So you would get that follow-up communication whether or not you did the first step?
And so the idea is somebody, even if they're reticent to come up with original ideas on their own, they want to come back and weigh in on and power load on the ideas that they think are the most meaningful to them, they have the ability to do that even though they did not complete the initial set. So the initial set creates this huge number of different ideas. The second set really gives people a chance to weigh in and put a weighting or power to each additional, individual idea.
And then my last question is, when would you envision that this would roll out to families and staff?
November.
November.
Okay.
I would say the middle of November or before. And I think we are targeting, as we have, as you know, done a number of school surveys over the years, one of the things I think we've learned is that if we can get the survey, and actually I would see this replacing some of the other school surveys that we've done and probably in a much more robust way. But by November, I've had a chance to engage in the school year, my students generally know their teachers, I've gotten a feel for what's going on. And then the advantage for the school district is we can still take action on any data that, you know, we gather. So sometimes when we think, oh, an end-of-the-year survey is best, well, sometimes there's things at the end of the year that you wish you would have known, you know, people were feeling about earlier on, you could have made a difference before the end of that school year. So consistently been coming back to November is about the right time, about a third of the way through the school year, a little more than a quarter, not quite half. It's, it's just really the time that we're focusing on that we think people have an informed opinion, yet we could still do something with the data once it comes back.
No.
What is the pricing?
You know, we are going to get some special pricing, you know, supposedly.
You know, that's special pricing.
So what we've seen right now is it's about $10,000 a year.
It would be about $5,000 reaching the surveys in each year.
Any other questions?
And again, not significantly different than what we spent when we worked with Griff and his group. And again, our, our hope and our expectation is going to be, we're going to get a significantly larger return of community, communication, it'll curve based on that. Okay?
Any other questions?
Rob, I'm sorry, it's 8:15. Sorry. I think that's all the information I have, Madam Chair.
I think it's extremely exciting. I think it's going to really prove to be quite interesting to watch how we try to engage our community in a, in a much more robust way. Okay, so that was items for information. So we will conclude now with just notification of future meetings being Monday, October 26th and Monday, November 9th, both at 7:00 PM. And then also just as a note, on Monday, November 9th at 6:30 PM, so just preceding the board meeting, there'll be a public hearing for the World's Best Workforce, also here in the High School Media Center. Okay, with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn.
I'd move adjourned.
Moved by Noel, second.
Second.
Second by Ann. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.